... He's six years old. It's very concerning as a parent, have a six-year-old riding on the bus with people that are in the 11th and possibly 12th grade. I think the board really needs to look at the interactions on the buses for the age groups. I don't think putting them all on one bus is going to be a great idea, but I just hope you'll keep considering that. Thank you.
Hello, Superintendent Board Members. I'm Alex Kapasi. I have to say, I completely appreciate the amount of changes that the new board has made, the new superintendent has wanted to make in schools, the district. But I have to say, because last year, you kind of feel like teeth deep breaths, and we are diligent to make sure they're doing right by everyone, I feel like we're just rushing all these changes on little people, whether they be 12th graders or five-year-olds, and their families respectfully, like, just so much. You just move kids, 600 of them approximately, like, all over our country, and everyone is just thrilled, like, ooh, it's a new year, we could just get to that transition, we're going to switch your bus time to choose some big kids. I think that's what, and Kim, who I did listen, I actually have a, this week does a wonderful job. I think we've had enough bus complaints and bus issues with seating and behaviors, I know my bus was one of them, we're splitting. Two, my other concern, I don't read all the specifics that are out there, concern would be as how many full-time positions would be lost for buses? I feel like if our district is doing these two tiers, and might even be strictly responsible, at what cost are we going to save a dollar to the point that we're going to reduce so many of the full-time drivers that we're going to have left over, who nobody else wants, or the quality full-time drivers are going to obviously go out of their district? And again, I know, like, we're just bus drivers, I don't know, we had a phenomenal year the last year, phenomenal driver now, and I've had some great ones. I don't know if we want to leave ourselves with anyone else that can't find a full-time job tomorrow in our district. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
Good evening. My name is Martin O'Carroll. I have three children that voted for Sin deli St. Coloma. And just like one of the previous things that we pay a lot of taxes to the school district, and those of us who have sold them to private schools, at least we expect to share the passing that has been there from, so it would be a great service to us to take that away from our streets at this point. Secondly, as I have known a little bit about street, the two tiers we come with passing that will let young children to wake up as early as possible from today right into any passing to their school, would be a great service and have a great impact on their ability to learn and cope. And so I'll pray with you guys that you consider the benefits of what we do to the children before we make decisions that will affect them.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment? All right. Seeing no one, there is now time for comments from the board. Mr. Lumia.
Just two brief comments. First of all, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much turkey. And last but not least, I'd like to wish the superintendent a happy birthday.
Yes.
Thank you.
Give it to him. Old.
There's also a comment that one of our board members, not four member, but a board
member wants to make, couldn't be it because of babysitting problems, asked who were the ones, the ones pouncing. So let me just read what she says. I don't know if it's appropriate to read it now or wait until their presentation is done.
Let's do it for the presentation.
Wait until the presentation is done. Thank you.
This is correct?
None of this. Mr. Rubin.
I have the pleasure of attending the Bosse's Board Meeting this past week, Bosse's Policy Committee Meeting. I had a very good time attending the College and Career Day at RCK. That was well represented. Last week, I made a statement, by the way, which I'd like to just add to that, I forgot to mention last week, that although I met with Assemblywoman Garrett and Congressman Maloney representatives of those offices, it was an error of omission, I forgot to mention that I was there on my own, not as representative of the board or any organization, so I'd like to just clarify that. I'd also like to just put something for the general public here, that on December 8th, I'll be going to a meeting along with others on this board, certain others, with a, to the, a meeting with the Commissioner of Education, and what I'd like to ask is that if there's anybody out there who would like me, I believe we're going to have a three-minute time period to talk or to give some presentation to the Commissioner, to bring a point up, please send me, send an email to me or some correspondence, because I would certainly like to be able to take that as your representative. Thank you.
Mr. Selma.
Oh, yes. Please send us comments to the whole board. We have three people going, Mr. Lumia, Mr. Rubin, and Dr. Vit Rizzi, but they'll certainly be happy to take your comments also. All right. Superintendent's report.
Well, I'm going to hand over my superintendent's report in one second to one of our guests today, but what I'd like to share quickly to all the parents that are here and speaking, we have many parents that have their students attending parochial schools. We do have a parental workshop on December 5th that will be held at Van White Middle School. We have approximately 26 topics that range from the Common Core learning standards to digital literacy, technology, as well as to crisis intervention, and dealing with the social and emotional learning aspect of children. We purposely looked at all the topics. The majority of people facilitating will be our teachers in our district, and we have consciously made it age-appropriate so that parents can attend. Please look in our website, look on our website and see when these sessions are taking place, and we hope to see you on December 5th. It's going to be tremendously worthwhile. At this point, I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce Dr. Richard Hooly, who is our new superintendent for Dutchess Bosse's. And I can only share with you that the other 12 superintendents in the district and I, we all share the same sentiment, that we are very pleased to have them here as our new superintendent for Dutchess Bosse's. So I'd like to take this opportunity and give over my superintendent's report to Dr. Maloney.
Thank you very much. I just have a few comments to make, and if you have any questions, I'll be certainly happy to answer them to the extent I can after a few months of the, of the job. So I began September 8th, and I appreciate the opportunity tonight to introduce myself. As background, I began my career as a high school English teacher, and I have worked as an administrator in five districts in three states, North Carolina, New York, and Arizona. I was for the last 13 years superintendent of schools for Valley Central in the town of Montgomery in Orange County. And during the summer, I met with superintendents, including Mr. Carrion, to get to know the needs of the Wapton School Districts, and I look forward to getting to know each of you as well. Currently, the Dutchess Bosse's enrolls 175 Wapton students. 107 of those are in our career tech program, 17 attend our Beta Alternative High School, and we have about 51 placements, 51 students in the Sawpoint Center, another district placement. Like Mr. Carrion, I invite you to call me if I can be of help at any time. I also hope you will see a greater Bosse's presence in some of your district beds. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best.
Thank you. Mr. Rubin.
This is not a question, but I would say that since I've met you, it has been my pleasure to deal with you. You've been open, forthright, very personable, and for my rest, the rest of the board members here, he is a great person to deal with if you need to.
Thank you. You're very kind.
And I'll take that check later.
That's all right. Any other, any other questions? Yes, sir.
Can I assume that any board member can visit the schools, or do we have to talk to you first?
Well, yeah, we'd like to have you talk to us first, so we can arrange someone to be available to take you through. Mr. Rubin has done that. We appreciate the opportunity to give you the tour and have someone go around with you in case you have questions, or, because there are some very special programs that they sometimes require a little information.
Thanks. Thank you.
I wish you luck.
Thank you. Thank you very kindly for tonight's time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. The next item is the consent agenda. Is there any item that a board member would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I just want to make a comment on something.
Mr. Rubin.
Thank you. It's not a removal, but I'd like to comment, I believe it's 6.03, I'd like to thank the John Jay Student Government for the money that they're donating for, donating here, and I think it's 6.06, but I'd like to also thank the Official Plans PTA, and I think there's the Booster Club there also for the financial assistance, John Jay Booster Club.
Thank you. Do you want to read the consent agenda?
We're there.
Yeah.
Okay. We resolve that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated: 6.02, 6.03, 6.04, 6.05, 6.06, 6.07, 6.08, 6.09, and 6.10.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, the second, Mr. Selma, all those in favor? unanimous. All right. All right, we now have some presentations. 7.01 Drug Awareness. Mr. Zip. And Mr. Okina will be assisting.
So while I'm writing, my name is Richard Zip, and I'm the Executive Director of Student Services and Special Vacation here at the Wapton Central School District, and I've been here since the beginning of September. So, what I want to do here is take you guys on this small little trip, once I get drug awareness, and we mentioned it's a big topic. To echo, I had a conversation today prior to coming to the board meeting, someone who was a supervisor for Cape, talking about the heroin epidemic, once again, to echo what the first speaker tonight said, the microphone, it does seem to be a consequence of prescription drug, oxycodone prescriptions over the last 20, 15, 20 years, when, you know, people, you know, feel like that that really was a serious problem, and that people were becoming addicted, there was a fast move to simply limit, you know, doctors' abilities to write scripts for those powerful, you know, medications, and what it did, it really took people who were addicted to painkillers and really forced them into cheap heroin. As of right now, based upon statistics, the number one population group who has issues with heroin are the 40 to 60-year-old population. Once again, these individuals who have some kind of chronic illness, needed to manage their pain, you know, management of the last 20 years, and as a consequence became addicted to these morphine-based drugs. I believe the state of Vermont is actually one of the top states in the nation with the heroin addiction, so once again, that's something you would think about. The second most targeted group right now are those students between ages of eight, well, young people between ages of 18 and 25. Once again, young individuals, you know, involved in some risk-taking behaviors, and once again, heroin as a drug over the last 25, 30 years has really kind of lost its, it's not seen as a dirty drug anymore. When I was growing up, you know, if you took heroin, you typically do use, you know, needles, it kind of had a little stigma to it, and currently, right now, it doesn't need, you know, it's cheap, students can, I can believe, snort it and smoke it once again, although they do end up, you know, moving towards using needles as the addiction grows. So right now, they're the second most, you know, difficult group here, next, after the 14 to 6-year-olds. What I did, take a look at this, is although, correct, PBIS is not developed to address drug use per se, what it does do in grades K through 6, and all schools here are PBIS schools, it does encourage good decision-making and wellness. If you think about that, that's going to be a topic tonight, and once again, you know, you're talking about with these young children making good decisions, making healthy decisions, you know, it could be about food, nutrition, behavioral choices in the classroom, things of that nature. So definitely, I kind of debated whether I was going to put it up here, once again, it wasn't developed with drugs, you know, per se, but once again, these are this kind of proto-conversations you're going to have with children who are six, seven, eight, nine. Clearly, you're not going to bring the drugs down to that level. That is a conversation we suggest that parents want to continue at home, based upon the good decisions that PBIS may be reinforcing, by all means, that's a family decision, but at least here at school, it's about simply making healthy choices, in a sense of wellness, it could be through nutrition, wellness, you know, choices in the school day, and simply how to conduct themselves. When you go into middle school, it's where it really, it kind of kicks up in the health curriculum per se. Once again, there's seventh and eighth grade, I put this down, there are 10-week modules, pretty much it's a whole, you know, one quarter, and you can see, once again, it focuses on alcohol, alcohol and tobacco. In addition to this, this district, both high schools have Cape substance abuse and mental health counselors in both high schools, and they do have the ability to push down to the middle schools, and once again, see students, you know, go into a class, you talk about the dangers of drugs and alcohol. So although they're primarily focused in the high schools, they are able to push down to Wapton and Bambin High School. And once again, you can see in middle school, it's about alcohol and tobacco. And once again, I believe that bottom things far as status concerns, I think that's Wap Juniors, I didn't know if it was Wap Juniors and Bambin together, is about 150 members. So once again, it's a great way to get students involved, status students, they can make effective decisions, and once again, you can see it's all about just making good decisions. So you kind of follow that kind of PBIS philosophy up through the system, about making good decisions and being responsible, and once you get to middle school, the focus now talks about things that, you know, middle school students are going to encounter, and that's typically drugs and alcohol, tobacco and alcohol, excuse me. Okay, so once again, I did some research, you know, once again, John Jay and RCK, one of the main services they have are two devoted, once again, mental health and substance abuse counselors from Cape, and speaking to the individuals today from Cape, these are incredibly trained and seasoned professionals, and they just run the whole gamut. So they see students individually, once again, spent through short-term services, they do work in groups, they can work with parents, they also, once again, work with all of the sport teams. So once again, two devoted people to hear, the district pays behalf of the salary, and they're here full-time. They've also, they've also gotten from Cape, been talking to the principals at both schools. We have little alcohol sensors that they use, and I talked to Mrs. King and Mr. Bell, they use those at the proms, once again, it isn't the prom, it's a simple blow, there's none of the touching thing, and they said over the last several years, it's really reduced the incidences of risky behavior during the proms. So once again, it all comes from Cape, and it's really a valuable resource here at the high schools. And as I said, they can, they can push down to the middle school, depending upon the needs, so once again, if they got a referral from one of the principals, once again, they can go back and forth between those schools, where most of these behaviors happen, of course, students engage in more risk-taking behaviors. What I did also, just to give you an idea, take a look at the curriculum mapping as far as what the health program looks like, and it went, once again, this is for all sophomores at both high schools, and they talk about skills to use to avoid and prevent drug use. Just so you know, also, besides having individuals here from Cape, we have people from Datapool come down, once again, and when they work with students, they are talking more about personal stories of addiction, some of those people could be counselors, some of those people could be actual clients, so although I don't think Cape necessarily engages in the more personal narrative, it's more about prevention intervention, education for parents and students at school, they do have individuals from Datapool come down, Datapool is a right back. And once again, meet with the students and kind of take them through their own personal stories of addiction, once again, let the students know that there are serious consequences to these, to these really risk-taking behaviors. And as you can see right there, once again, it's a four-week unit of study at the high school, it's a whole month, and you can see some of the topics that they focus on right Talking about Cape, once again, they did a survey, the high schools, about three years ago, once again, they're looking for, with respect to alcohol and drugs, trends with adolescents, you know, frequency, what kind of drugs are they using, where are they using them, how much, what are the contexts in which students engage in these kind of risk-taking behaviors, what do the bystanders stand or do, because they're looking to identify hot spots, looking to identify trends with students. Once again, they take the survey data, they did it about three years ago, and then, based upon the data, push it back into the school, give it to their Cape counselors, to see if they can use that to identify certain trends. And as I said, both Cape counselors are pretty skilled at looking for some of the warning signs with students. Once again, they're all the typical signs, you know, decreasing grades, irritable behavior, changes in performance of someone than athlete, you know, I've worked with students, you know, during many years, you tend to get a sense, kind of know who someone is and kind of how they function, but when you see that kind of change in behavior, kind of irritable, short-tempered, you know, grades change, it's definitely a risk and a warning sign. They are going to do a new survey this year, they haven't, I think, set a date yet, but once again, same kind of survey, look to identify trends, usage patterns, risk factors, and then use that information, and then push it back up in high school and see if they can prevent some of this naturally happening. This is new, so this goes back, this really goes in the whole heroin epidemic. Narcan Education Law 922 was allowed this, oh, I guess, I think, into September, and what it is, Narcan is a nasal spray, and it only works against opiates, so once again, if you're in the throes of an overdose reaction, if they spray this Narcan at the nasal spray, it only acts on opiates in your body, and it reverses the overdose reaction. People who I know, who are some EMTs who have witnessed that, you need to think about somebody really being lethargic because they're in the middle of a serious drug overdose, you get to the spray of the Narcan, and they come out fighting, because their whole body is now just simply brought to life. The law allows schools to make a decision, so it's not forcing us to use Narcan, it's saying that the choice is ours. Once again, it's probably the best drug there is, and it's a living, safe and easy way, nurses can do it, they even allow laypeople to be trained to do it, once again, it's a simple nasal spray. That's something we're going to bring to obviously the board and to the community to discuss and talk about. If you want to adopt it, it's a simple policy that the board will review through all the policy committees. Once adopted, we work through the Department of Health and have the nurses trained, and then we'd be a site to house Narcan, and it'd be an open nurse's office. From what I understand, it sounds like something that seems pretty simple, straightforward, not really complicated, and once again, based upon the epidemic, you know, something that definitely saves lives. So it's obviously a conversation to continue. Also, just so you know, I mentioned about it, if you don't have any signs of opiates in your system, and just say you look as if you're having an overdose reaction, if you spray, if you spray the Narcan, it has no impact at all, so it only works on opiates in the body, so, once again, if you see someone, it's a false positive, and somebody goes to help, and they spray with them, there's no reaction. It's like spraysing, it's like spraying, you know, salt water. So once again, a great drug to have, and obviously, you know, conversations to have as we move forward. Then, once again, as Superintendent Carrion mentioned, we are, we are going to have workshops in December, and the topic of drug use intervention is going to be one of the three workshops potentially, with grades K3, 4, 8, 9, 12, clearly, different focus on each grade, usually, once again, with on K3, you know, what would you say, what, you know, what would you do if you think about, you know, going back to the whole PBIS kind of umbrella term, this is all falls under the social-emotional learning, so once again, we're assuming that people are good, sound, social-emotional learners, you know, they're not going to take serious risky behavior. So once again, that's going to be different conversations with your seven-year-old, that's going to live with your 17-year-old. Once again, in high school, you can deal with a little more blunt and straightforward, consequences are pretty severe, you simply want them to understand the consequences of the decisions that they're going to make potentially. I think that's it. So little, any questions or comments?
Mr. Rubin.
Thank you for your presentation, number one, I think the board should look into Narcan as a policy, there's no question about it. Secondly, years ago, you used to have dogs come into high schools. Are we still doing that?
Not that I know of, although I did speak to Mr. Terry here at Wapton, and he did mention to me, and I didn't quite flesh out all the details, but apparently, one of the K9 units, I think he said, trains the dogs through Wapton, so I didn't quite get all the background to that, whether it was, you know, school day, whatever the case may be, he did mention to me that that was something that had happened.
Yeah, it happened, I'd like, I'd like to see it happen again, but I think it's extremely, we're down with their educational programs, but I think if kids are selling, they have to stop. So I think that's something that the board should consider re-instituting as soon as possible.
Mrs. Karra.
Thank you, Mr. Zip. Could you go into a little bit more in-depth the in-house representative that is full-time staff from Cape?
Yep.
Is that a representative in each of the high schools?
Uh huh.
Could you take us through a little of their day, and also touch on how, how students have the freedom to come to them, for instance, for example, maybe to speak about a friend that they're concerned with, and, you know, how that works for, from a student's point of view?
Sure. Having, having not, not being a Cape provider, and as a supervisor, they, it's really a different kind of role, so for the most part, they're working, students are already at risk or designated at risk, so once again, it could be individual counseling sessions, and this isn't meant to be long-term, so it's meant to be really short and cute, and it's kind of multi-level, with the families and the school and whatnot. So it could be individual counseling sessions, it could be group counseling sessions, there are going to be educational in-service sessions in classes, they help class, PE class, there's work with all the athletes, and, you know, before the season starts, once again, talk about good choices. And once again, as far as the Cape counselors are concerned, although, you know, although we pay for them to have the salary, they don't officially work for the school district, so it shows a confidentiality, going back to high school students, really plays quite strongly. So outside of the individual student talking about hurting himself, any kind of issues of abuse, really, whatever is spoken with the Cape counselor is confidential, stays with the Cape counselor as far as their, you know, ethics are concerned, whereas sometimes I think people in the school community want to be helpful, and, you know, if you get additional information, they're bound by confidentiality. So I think at the high school level, if students want to speak to them, talk to them about a friend or even themselves, you know, it's a total confidential nature, and speaking to them, they find that that helps them do what they do, because students go to them, and they're not going to talk to their parents, they're not going to talk to the principal outside of those major issues, it's a confidential conversation, it allows the Cape counselor to have a segue into a student's life, and use that leverage to kind of influence change.
Thank you.
Mr. Rubin.
Thank you. I was also, I had the privilege of attending that meeting here at Wapton Jus. Jr. about five or six weeks ago, that was put on by the PTA Council, and it's important to know that this is not just an epidemic, this is a scourge, this affects families, lives, there were people that were talking there that it was gut-wrenching to hear the stories that heroin and the drug epidemic does and affects people. And it's not an easy thing. If, if winning the war on drugs was easy, the federal government, the state, the local government, government would have won this in nineteen sixty-five or nineteen seventy. This is something that the district takes very seriously. One of the points that was made actually at that district, we are fortunate, if you will, excuse me, one of the points made at that meeting, was that Duchess County is really at the epicenter in terms of this, in terms of this heroin epidemic in New York State, because, like it or not, we're a transportation hub for distribution up to the upstate area. We have Metro North ending here, the Deconic runs right through, eighty-four, Route Nine, there are just a lot of ways for these illegal substances to be coming here, and from here, they make their way to other points, north and west. So it's something that the district, I believe, has been taking seriously for a number of years, to the degree that we can, we're doing things. Mr. Carrion, I don't know how many, tens of thousands, how much money do we spend on these, a lot, right, on these programs?
We do, close to a hundred.
Hundred thousand dollars? So it's not something-
Close to.
Okay. Not something that we take lightly. And I think it's important for the community to know that, I believe that with your leadership, said that we'll continue to try and adapt and do the best that we can going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Selma. I'd like to echo what Mr. Lumia said, and I was wondering, Mr. Carrion and Mr. Ziff, if you could kind of give us your recommendation as to whether these ideas of training our nurses for Narcan and the snipping dogs, if these are ideas that you would suggest that we implement or-
Sure. I mean, once again, based upon what I read from the research, with Narcan, that seems to be simply something you should do, because it instantaneously reverses the effects of an overdose. It's proven to save lives. It's a nasal spray, we're not talking about anything too complicated. The nurses would be trained from people from the Department of Health, which would be enough to secure them. And if more people wanted to be trained in the ability to deliver Narcan, they could also have, you know, make people at the school train teachers, administrators. So as far as I'm concerned, that seems to be something that we can move with fairly quickly, you know, support policy, and then training, and then we get the Narcan, the nurses would still, you know, have it in their offices. They do recommend also to have them placed in the schools, through like the AED containers, just so they're easily accessible, should there be an emergency. So if something happened during the daytime, you know, it'd be a different spot in the building, but once again, it's a conversation to have. But I would definitely recommend that. As far as the dogs, you know, useful, I don't know much research about how that, you know, what direction it goes into. I do know that kind of potentially changes the culture of the school, kind of message you're given, but it's something to think about, because, once again, if it's going to work and reduce the amount that students could potentially bring to school, it's a factor.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Lumia?
Just a comment. The message that we sent by having dogs and kids, that are not bringing big drugs in school, I think a very positive message to bring. So I think it's good to have, it worked in the past, I think we should consider it. And so far as the Narcan, the policy, I think that should be written as soon as possible, and possibly adopted at the next board meeting. I think it's very essential. Vote issues should be considered as soon as possible.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Ziff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion.
As far as the dogs are concerned, it's definitely controversial in some respect. And I think it's important for us, our assistant superintendent, Lo Kima, will be meeting with the principals soon, and we talked about actually dividing this meeting for the secondary principals separately from the elementary principals, and we can add that to the agenda to really have that conversation, and also invite our school resource officers to really discuss this matter at length, so we know exactly what it is that we're talking about and what we're getting into as a school district, if that's what we're committing to do.
Now, the school resources, but perhaps the local police should be invited to that meeting too. Those who have the experience with those dogs.
That's a number of different police, please.
I couldn't care less which one.
I knew it.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Ziff. The next item on the agenda is the wellness plan.
Good evening, Board of Education. This evening, we would like to provide the wellness procedures and standards as a presentation to the seniors for discussion purposes moving forward. This is not a policy, this is a procedure and standard document that is reviewed by the district-level wellness committee. The policy is under the purview of the Board of Education, and that policy will be discussed in a little more detail as we move through the presentation. The wellness policy, fifty-nine hundred, as well as these procedures and standards that you have before you, that are being shared with you this evening, really are concerned with overall health and well-being of our students. This goes deeper than just our food service, it goes into the classrooms, because we, it's proven fact that there's a link between learning and nutrition. We also have this evening, as representative from our physical education and interscholastic, as well as health, we have coordinator, Mr. Joseph Luzzi, and we also have Mr. Matthew Fuster, the food service director here as well. I'm, I'm-
Hi, Matthew.
Oh, hi, Kurt. I didn't recognize Kurt's mustache. Thank you very much, Steve Ming, for coming in support of these procedures and standards. Schools have a responsibility to help students establish and maintain lifelong habits of being physically active. This is a statement that is pulled directly from the procedures and standards document, and how does Lavenders achieve them. It's done through nutrition education, which is in the building, in the lunchroom, in the classrooms. It's also done through physical activity, which is both promoted in-school as well as out of school, and other school-based activities, such as our reimbursable school meals that are USDA compliant, food and beverages that are sold within the buildings that are also USDA compliant, and food available to make smart decisions outside of the school desk. So the district has a district-wide wellness committee. Mr. Fuster is the chairman for that committee, with each building being represented. There were several meetings that were held to discuss these standards, to make some updates. And it does walk a fine line between the policies and the procedures and standards. Mr. Fuster is not to serve as the officer inside the building, so if there's something that's occurring that doesn't appear to be in line with these standards, he's not the police officer of that type of activity. But, so it's not only food service, it really is a district-level awareness that we're looking for. So the district wellness committee meets at least quarterly, and did meet, I wasn't able to attend, but they did meet a few times in review of this document. They make sure that they assess the current environment of the school, they look at the wellness policy itself, to make sure that the policy is in line, in line with what the district is wishing as continued to move forward as well with this document. They try to build awareness and support, and they also would then make any recommendations based on these conversations to the Board of Education for policy recommendations and updates. Also, it gives this document, individual building, school wellness committees, and again, these are booked to, you're booked to these committees to really be active in the building itself, and to be, and they report back their data to the district-wide committees. So they, we really need these individual wellness committees, which do this at the building level, to have conversations about how to increase awareness, how to evaluate the implementation of the program, and how to see if there's any areas of improvement as they move forward. So as I had stated earlier, the procedures and standards were reviewed by the wellness committee. This is not, this document does not get approved by the Board of Education, it is presented with the Board of Education and should be done so annually. So here we are, presenting this to the seniors. There were small revisions made to the procedures and standards. A lot of the language that was changed, and I'm going to say that, we've probably changed about ten things, all total, were related to the USDA guidelines, to make sure that the document was compliant with what needs to be served and what can be served throughout the school desk. There were a few misspellings and grammatical errors that were corrected, and there was one sentence that was subjective in nature, that we really didn't think was appropriate, and that change was due. But at this time, the district-level committee does not have any recommendations to be made to the policy committee, to go to policy fifty-nine hundred. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lumia.
I want to give you a statement that Ms. Pelton emailed, texted me. Says, I hope that someone could mention to the Health and Wellness Committee, is possible expansion of the policy. Policies are only as good as their implementation. Could consider an accountability of implementation protocol. Some districts have each, have in each school, maintain a health and wellness team comprised of three to five staff and faculty members. They are charged with responsibility to making sure all staff and faculty are knowledgeable of the policy and monitoring its implementation. All parents of elementary students are well aware, the current policy is not adhered to. That's what she says. So I don't know if they, if you can comment on that or not. We actually adhere, adhere to the policy, and is the policy consistent with PPA? Is PBIS actually promoting candy as a, as a, what do you call it, as rewards for kids? Is that consistent with our policy of nutritional values and so forth? I don't know if somebody can answer that or not. I sincerely hope not, but if it is, then it should be stopped.
I can tell you that at the building level, it is not consistent for one building to the next. But the policy is not that strict in that it says you can never have a cupcake. Some building principals say, you know what, at the elementary level, for example, we're going to have birthday parties once a month, or we're going to only allow at those birthday parties, fruits and vegetables. We have bake sales that occur, they're fundraising activities throughout the school desk. Again, food service understands that there is, and has shared with administration, that there needs to be a certain size, a calorie count, a sugar count, fat count, that needs to be adhered to. So who plays police officer when it comes to that type of activity? So we are aware, we do make recommendations, we do step back and say, let's try to come to some sort of consensus. But the wellness policy nowhere does it say that you can never have a cupcake. So again, trying to have a conversation that is fair and uniform, some building principals truly believe that, that that type of a activity is fine, some principals do not think that's fine. And I don't know, in all honesty, what the role of the Board, how the Board would like us to move forward with that. And with regard to PBIS and candy, I would need somebody else to agree to that.
Well, all I can say very simply, if we're rewarding kids with unhealthy, I can understand a principal perhaps decided to have a birthday, or whatever, a birthday cake, so to raise money, whatever the case, but if someone's rewarding kids for behavior, which they should first of all follow the first case, with candy, I think it's a, it's sending a wrong message into kids. I mean, I don't believe that we should be rewarding. Personally, I don't think we should be rewarding kids for good behavior. It's crazy. We should expect kids to behave, not reward them.
I think we need to do some more work on PBIS, and I think that we need to. I also believe that we are caught up on this very small percentage of what people perceive, what people perceive PBIS to be, and it's a lot more than that. And I think that our executive director spoke about it briefly today. But we, as a school district, definitely need to continue our work with PBIS. It's not something that you develop one day and it just really comes about overnight. It is part of a culture that we have to continue to nurture, and we have to continue to then, I would then agree with trustee Pelton to maybe revisit this policy, because language is culture. And if we're going to have a policy that allows for differences, for different activities to occur in different schools, then this is what's going to happen. We are going to have people that will then say, why is this happening in this school and not happening over at this school, or why are we allowing some of these things to occur, when in fact, the board policy indicates how it is that we can continue to provide activities and events in our school buildings? I can tell you, there's one elementary school where there are no cakes, nothing, absolutely there, absolutely, there's nothing that they actually provide as an incentive for birthday parties in that respect. And I don't know if there's more than one. We do have a very large school district, and that's probably one of the conversations we want to have. So we want to become extremely consistent with our language, that then creates the culture that we're looking for in the district, where we can then say, absolutely not, or these things are acceptable. Therefore, maybe considering Tracy Pelton's recommendation to revisit this wellness policy, although it's not the recommendation from the committee, would probably be a good thing.
I'd just like to say that I agree with Mr. Lumia that rewards are not the best way to have good behavior, but I do see that especially with children who are not accustomed to behaving well, it's a transitional thing, where you give rewards. But of course, we all know that character means doing the right thing when you don't get rewarded, and doing it despite disincentives and the lack of approval of your peers or even of adults, so that we have to build into doing the right thing because it's the right thing. But sometimes rewards of some sort can be a transition, but it doesn't have to necessarily be candy. I know my grandson is in second grade, just loves those little certificates called being good. He treasures that. So that's, you know, that can be, you know, with younger children, a way of moving there. There are two things that I would like to suggest for the wellness policy. One is with vegetables at lunch. Most children, most people like at least some vegetables, either raw or cooked, and it seems to me that if we put a variety of vegetables as the choice in a menu, rather than the vegetable of the day, we might get more kids willing to pick one of them. And it shouldn't be that hard to, you know, to, have a pot of a couple of different cooked ones and some raw ones if they like those instead, and maybe we get more children to try them, and then perhaps branch out. And the second thing was about recess, especially in the bad weather. A lot of classrooms, although they have recess, don't really have much physical activity. And I've been reading that they've been doing some efforts in Finland and Japan, where they have a fifteen-minute recess after every forty-five-minute class. They have longer school days than we do, but they have more recess and worked into it. That they've been trying to come up with activities that children can do in bad weather that will get them moving a bit. So have we looked into this with suggestions for the teachers? Mrs. Karra.
Yes. I, just for my benefit, actually, as a new board member, could you- Could you just reiterate or go into a little bit more depth, when the, when the committee assessed the current environment in the schools, could you elaborate, just for my benefit as a new board member, what the current environment is in terms of food, exercise, how they look at it as a committee?
Sure. At the committee, the committee would love to see more P.E. time. They are very, very aware of the state's standard, what Lavenders offers. A conversation always occurs about food service options. For example, ranch dressing for your vegetables. Does it have to be ranch dressing? Could it be balsamic? You know, those types of conversations occur. Matthew likes to share- Matthew likes to share the local, the focus on local that we really try to incorporate. Right now, we have local apples, for example. That will be with the district for January. There's a serious concern with what's allowed in a school building during those fundraisers, during those bake sales. You know, no candy is supposed to be sold during the day. So it's a fundraiser, but what's really truly happening in the building? And it's finding that uniformity and that ability to have that responsibility and that accountability. So there is concern with the committee at that level. But it's kind of like coming from all different directions. Nothing that's a huge push with the exception of the P E, which we understand based on our current situation, where we stand with that. But that's where the Wellness Committee has really found their focus. When we attempted to look at this document last school year, it got so muddled with the minutia, like the specifics, that it really, which really belonged with the building level, that to bring something that's district-wide, and again, to have that level of accountability, there's frustration there.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, Mrs. Carrick.
Okay, so for the third presentation this evening, this is really a conversation starter. We're looking at wide information. This was just for us to move forward through the process of a discussion in the changing of school start times, as well as a look at the two-tier transportation system. And I wanted to start off by saying that this was a collaborative and team effort. There was a lot of work and energy that has gone into this. This is, again, a starting point for conversation. I really want to recognize Kim Catalano, I mean True, Mr. Brog, Mr. Perion. We spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we provided as much information as possible. We know that there'll be many questions going forward. But we really do want to acknowledge the amount of time and effort that has been put into this initial conversation. In April of two thousand fifteen, a presentation was given to the Board of Education discussing two-tier transportation as well as the change in start times. We looked at the pros and cons from many different areas. We tried to look at them from instructional program, efficiencies, fiscal, impact to the community. And we also did a survey in April of two thousand fifteen to try to get additional feedback from the community. Why are we having this conversation? We're having this conversation based on a Board of Education goal, the fiscal goal that was adopted by the Board. And how are we doing that? By looking at whether or not services can be streamlined in the transportation department to save money. So the results from that April two thousand fifteen survey are shown here. We do realize that this is a survey that was done in April, and we will be looking to update this information as well. But overall, the result to change the start time were sixty-one percent yes, thirty-one percent no, and eight is no opinion. The overall average as well is when to make the change with two thousand fifteen, sixteen. But at that point in time, we're having this discussion in April. We didn't really think that there was enough time to be able to implement this. We had Transportation Department working with an outside vendor to ensure that we really had the routes right, that we were going to have enough people. And we really looked at one scenario in order to have this conversation because we wanted to see if it was even doable before we brought it forward. And our concern again is not only making sure it'll work at the district level, but the impact that this could have on families was large. So we wanted to make sure that we provided enough time and conversation. So why are we looking to have a later start time for WAPH Central School District secondary students? It's been noted, this deprivation is of serious concern. It impacts cognitive abilities, it robs students the opportunity to learn. Also, there's that complex problem solving that they're not able to work through as effectively when there's this surprise. So there are various studies that have supported this, including the New York State School Boards Association. There are pilot programs, starting with high schools and secondary schools later in other districts around us. And we're all aware of the societal demands versus the biological needs for secondary students with regard to sleep. Another large factor in this rationale is safety, and that was discussed during public comment this evening. That there's two facets to this. The first being that if you push that start back, start time back, just even just a few moments, it's that much less time that students would be in the dark, whether they'll be walking into school or waiting at their bus stop. By providing those extra few moments of sunlight really make a difference, both at the beginning of the day and at the end of the day for our elementary students, if we were to push their start time forward. Additionally, it will give administration the additional moments to make a decision on implement weather. And again, that weather can change from one moment to the next. It can be completely different on the north end versus the south end. So as we can test too, there are several long conversations that start at four-thirty, quarter to five in the morning. And again, pushing back these start times really does allow the district the opportunity, a few more moments to make a decision. We would also have some efficiencies, which again, is in alignment with the Board's goal with regard to transportation in general, miles driven, as well as morning drop-off. Because a lot of times, buses get there too early. And if we can align those times up so that students aren't sitting on the buses and for those five or six minutes before the staff are ready to take them into the building, we would be able to hone in on that as well. Why would we be looking to have this change in start time in our rationale for the elementary students? Again, earlier dismissal allows for more time for after-school activities. Some of our students get home at four-thirty, quarter to five, that's late. So we're really looking to try to provide some wiggle room for that. The safety, again, that dismissal in the afternoon gives them in the sunlight, those few extra moments. And efficiencies, again, in the transportation department. So what are our next steps in this initial conversation? Well, we really wanted to take the time to look at the concerns that a change in start time would have. So at the district level, we have negotiated contracts. Do we have enough staff? Does it impact the teacher's workday? Transportation needs. Do we have the right number of vehicles? Do we have the right types of vehicles? Do we have the right schedules in place for our mechanics, for example? We have the private and parochial schools, not only the schools, but also the families related to those schools. We're concerned about the disruption to family, for this, any potential disruption of instructional programs. How a change in start time would impact our extracurricular and interschoolastic activities? What does this mean for professional development around the district? Also, we have the opportunities. We have driver cleaners. So through the day, our full-time drivers are put into the building and we provide cleaning time that's really relied on by the facilities and operations department as well as the building and administration. What does that mean for that? These are all areas that we've had concerns and we really were mindful of as we had this conversation. So what's the proposal that we're working towards, gathering data for? Is to have, we're currently in progress, we have our high schools starting at seven-seventeen, our junior highs and Myers Corners approximately seven-fifty, and all of our elementary schools starting at eight-fifty. Our proposal would be to have the high schools and junior high schools start at seven-thirty a.m. and have our elementary schools start in the vicinity of eight-thirty a.m. as well. So currently, we have two hundred and fifty-two departments of transportation of food vehicles. And what I mean by that is those are eligible to transport students, and they have set the safety requirements and are inspected by our mechanic department of transportation. We have two hundred and thirty-four drivers and thirty-nine bus monitors. That is total fleet. That is not just what would pertain to, to in-district students, it's out-of-district for parochial school vehicles. We have out-of-district transportation runs, eighty-four, special education, and fifty-one private and parochial. We've transported approximately twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-eight students per day for both in-district and out-of-district placement. Our private and parochial students, because of their start time, are currently transported during our second tier of transportation. The private and parochial start time is between eight and eight-thirty a.m. And also, we have some congestion at that high school and middle school level when those buses are coming in and parents are dropping off. Both in the morning and when they're picking up in the afternoon. Other areas that we're very, very aware of as we move through this process. So what do other districts do? We have surveyed five of our districts to see when their secondary and elementary start times are. For the most part, these districts are all two-tier. Hyde Park at McKipsey has this little window, shifting window to make them a third tier, but not truly a third tier in the same nature when you compare it to WAPH's. So as we start this conversation, we really want to explain the following things. Current special education runs would not be affected in these scenarios as we have run them. Elementary runs will stay the same, will remain as they are currently routed. There would be no change with regard to the runs themselves. We would just be pushing the time, changing the time of those runs. As we move through this discussion, only those runs that would be affected are being included. So it wouldn't include those elementary runs that they just told you would remain the same except for shifting the timeline. Transportation has also reached out to the private and parochial schools. It was done last spring, as well as recently as last week. Conversations have been had. There's no change, the parochial schools have not made any indication that they would be looking to change their start time. So their start time would remain between eight and eight-thirty a.m. So no change for the parochial start times at this point in time during the discussion. And WAPH's can't make the parochials change their time. So we have worked our scenarios around their existing schedule. Additionally, Vassar and Henry Schools transport in the afternoon on different runs. We'd be looking to combine those. And we would work with building administration to get that along and to make that work. The morning runs are combined, so we know it can work. We're going to definitely look to incorporate that if we do make a change to the two-tier system. In working with the P E and Interschoolatics Department coordinators, we made sure that interschoolatics would not be affected by this change in start times. And to go much past seven-thirty would cause a concern for interschoolastic and our extracurricular activities. So that's why that seven-thirty start time was being listed for high schools. We would continue based on what our current scenario is. We transport, we have a shuttle system that works from Fishville Plainfield to Evans that shuttles the majority of our parochial students, eighteen vehicles. We would continue to have that as we work with these scenarios. Again, with the start time for the private and parochial not changing, with the district really being mindful of the impacts to all families, we really try to keep it as concise as possible. And in the initial conversation, we didn't put dollars and cents in here. This is for us just to start to have the conversation, to look at the miles, to make comparisons, and to ask questions as we move forward. So when we were building these scenarios, we really wanted to keep in mind that the district has a policy about ridership and the amount of time that students can be on a bus. Regular education students, as well as private and parochial students. We wanted to make sure that we were compliant with safety procedures and protocols. We were conscious of the Board of Education goals for streamlines and efficiencies, and we wanted to cause the least amount of disruption to student and family. So we're currently transporting approximately seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-two miles annually for students on affected runs that would be affected by this change in tier. So again, the elementary school routes will continue. They're not included in that seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. They would remain the same because the parochial schools would not be riding with the third-tier students. I'm sorry, the elementary students were currently third-tier. There would be no change in the special education routes. And we're only going to be talking about those routes that are effective. So I just wanted to make sure that we're clear as we go forward with this discussion. So the first scenario is all John Jay, Van Wyck, and South End, private and parochial students would be routed together, and all WAP Junior, RCK, and North End parochial students would be routed together. So we have a total annual miles of three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty. When you compare that to the seven twenty-six, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, that's a great reduction in the number of miles. But what's the pros and cons? So we have the later start times for the secondary schools that work, earlier dismissal for the elementary schools, okay? Much fewer miles, and bus loads are adequate. And when I say bus loads are adequate, we have looked at max load capacity of sixty-five with an average of approximately sixty students. And we also looked at timing of these runs to make sure they were compliant with policy. So what are the cons to this plan? High schools are already very congested. We're going to add nine vehicles at each high school for these shuttle runs because the, you would do your runs, we'd come to the high school, the parochials would disembark, get onto their shuttle that would be speeding, and they would go from there. We also have a serious time concern from Van Wyck to John Jay. That five-point-two mile to make it in a matter of minutes isn't going to happen. So Van Wyck would, students would be potentially arriving late to school. The concern the district also has is that K-12 parochial students would be on the same bus as secondary public students. I would like to add that currently, we do have, as do many other districts, public school students riding with parochial students. And that's happening at the second tier, I'm sorry, so that's the middle school level, that we have kindergarten, parochial students, as well as senior, parochial students riding with middle school students. So, and that does occur in other districts. When we did our search on the start times, we also looked at how they handle their parochial runs as well. Are they separate? Are they combined? How do we do it? So we're not the only district that has kind of like a smattering of everything going on because the majority of our students, parochial students, ride independent, but we do have students that ride with the second tier. We, another con we thought would not be a positive, I guess that makes sense, a con that wouldn't be a positive. But we have students who, say for example, live right next to Van Wyck. They live right next to Van Wyck, they're going to take the whole trip around, they're going to come to John Jay, parochial students disembark, and then they have to travel all the way back to Van Wyck. So it was a big loop that we were concerned about. There are a handful of routes that are outside of the forty-five-minute in-district student policy. That's a serious concern for us. And the ride times would be extended slightly for the private and parochial. These details can be provided, but again, we were, this is an overview for discussion as we move forward. Scenario two, we have Van Wyck and the South End private and parochial routed together, WAP Junior and the North End routed together for private and parochial, RCK routed separately, John Jay routed separately. So our miles are at five hundred and one, three hundred and thirty-two miles. Again, that current annual mileage is approximately seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. So what are our pros with this scenario? Later start time, earlier dismissal, the same that we saw before, fewer miles concurrent, and bus loads are all adequate. However, there's congestion at the middle school lot. We have concerns about adding those shuttle runs there. Safety of students as well as just the flow and the efficiency of the parking lot. Again, a few of these routes are outside of the forty-five-minute Board of Ed policy. And several of them are really close to the forty-five minutes. So not, not the best-case scenario, but a scenario for discussion. Scenario three, John Jay is routed separately, Van Wyck and the South End private and parochial routed together, RCK, WAP Junior, and the North End are routed together. Total miles, three hundred and sixteen one thousand. I would like to add, we've looked at this RCK, WAP Junior, there's a great distance, or difference between the one-point-two-six miles and the five-point-two miles to get between Van Wyck and John Jay and RCK and WAP Junior. So that was something we looked at as well. We have a lot of the same pros that we've had on the previous slide. But again, we still have that congestion at the middle school school, and we have a few routes that are outside of the forty-five. and we have a few routes that are outside of the forty-five minutes. Scenario four, John Jay is routed separately, Van White is routed separately, WAP Junior and RCK, each separate. South End private parochial is routed together, North End private and parochial are routed together. We meet the expectations for later start times, earlier dismissal. Fewer miles than was current, it's actually the closest in miles. Bus loads are adequate, ride times within policy. There's no, when looking at private parochial ride time and in-district ride time, we're within limits. This plan, this scenario, looks like a good scenario for further discussion. Scenario five, again, we have, this is where we have taken the, John Jay routed separately, Van White separated, WAP Junior, RCK together, and we put all the private and parochial together on thirty-three vehicles, I believe it was, thirty-three vehicles. We actually exceed the mileage that we currently have now. But all students will ride on school on time. There is reduced time for private and parochial students. But it is more miles than what is currently used. And we actually don't have enough vehicles to be able to actually complete this scenario because of the preventative maintenance schedule that we have. So that two hundred fifty-four vehicles I showed you earlier, that includes the specialized vehicles, the sort of other ones that we have. So, and add to that the preventative maintenance and inspection schedules, and we would have a concern on a daily basis. The final scenario we'd like to share with you today is John Jay routed separately, Van White routed separately, RCK and WAP Junior routed together, and the private and parochial schools depart from two central locations. The mileage is about three hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-two. Again, we have a lot of the same pros, but this would be a very large disruption to private and parochial families because we would be looking to have parent transport to a central location, one on the north and one on the south. Again, this was just for discussion purposes, but we wanted to see how that would shake out by having them depart from a central location and then be shuttled to their schools. So, just for conversation, we wanted to make sure we looked at everything. So putting the scenarios in a summary schedule for the Board of Education to review, if there's not a check in the box, it hasn't met the expectation. So three of these do not meet Board of Ed's policy. Four of them cause disruption that we don't think would be favorable. We have the Board of Ed goals, we have safety procedures and protocols. These are the criteria that we put in place as we started this discussion. So what are our next steps? Definitely have some feedback and questions from the Board of Education. We'd like to issue a second survey to parents. We'd like to gather more data, more feedback, answer questions from the public. And I know that these are not going to come all this evening, but we definitely want to start this conversation and then look to the Board of Education for how they would like to proceed into the future. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Oops, sorry. Are there any questions? Mr. Lumia.
Well, I'll tell you right now, there are a lot of questions I have. I haven't got them formulated for that presentation. I'll just, my quick question, how do you want to deal with parochial schools insofar as instruction time? From what I gather, they start at seven fifteen, right?
Arlington's start time is seven thirty for the high school and eight fifteen for the elementary school.
And the elementary school at eight thirty, but they start school at eight thirty? Where the parochial schools start their school at?
Between eight and eight thirty.
So how do they deal with instruction time? These students are actually missing instruction time.
Well, according to Arlington, their private schools are picked up with their public schools at bus stops, then transported to a central location to meet buses, shuttles, similar to that we have, to transfer them to the parochial schools and private schools. Some private parochial schools have their own runs, just like we do, but it's usually a van, not a large vehicle. So it's kind of the same thing that we have, except that we have more private parochial on their own vehicles versus Arlington. They have community stops, they get on the buses, they go to a central location. So how their timing works, Mr. Lumia, they come in on their first tier. They come in with the high schoolers and then get shuttled.
There's been concerns expressed regarding older kids and younger kids.
Well, currently, you have K-12 riding on, K-12 parochial students riding on the buses together. We also have middle school students riding on K-12 parochial buses, public middle school students.
Have we had any problems with that? That you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, and I can tell you that based on the research that we've done, many other districts also have the same type of activity that there's, you know, private school and regular education students driving together.
Yes, from my curiosity, what do we offer besides busing to parochial students? What else are you offering?
We have health services that are offered to those schools as well. We improve the rate for those, for that bill.
Do we provide books for them too?
Yes.
Psychologies?
Non-public, yep.
Again, I have a lot of questions at this point, so I'll hold on to them until I study the diagram of it.
Please, that's a lot of information to digest.
For those Board of Education members that have questions and you want to formulate them?
I will.
We will get them all and we will put them on the slide projector so that way we can show the community, as well as go through all of the questions and provide you with those answers. As Kristen did indicate, very nice job, by the way. This is really an introduction from what was talked about. And just to remind you, the last year, the Board of Education was considering the two-tier bus schedule, and we did work with the vendor. However, the recommendation was really made to not do it for that square year. And lastly, more and more, we hear articles, we see articles, and we receive so many complaints. We never get it right, whether we have a two-hour delay, close school. We're never going to get it right for all parents. However, what more and more school districts are doing too is putting on a three-hour delay. You may hear that now on the radio. We would love to consider having a three-hour delay, which would then mean that we would have more opportunities for students to be in school. However, our schedule does not allow for us to be able to have a three-hour delay, which also complicates that morning to decide whether we're going to close school or have a two-hour delay.
Last year, I believe there was a comment regarding cost, between the tier three and tier two. Was that two hundred thousand dollars savings over there, abouts?
Well, that's why we provided files right now, because there is an operating cost to mine. So at this preliminary discussion, we would take the difference between those mileage savings or differential and figure out what our savings could be from there. After we backed her in, there'd be increased travel time, there would be this, there would be that. So we really wanted to have, just provide the Board of Education with the opportunity to have this information, start to digest it. And to cross out six scenarios might be a bit much, especially when some of them are just not feasible, adulting policy, or they just cause too much havoc for families.
Well, I think it's important that you survey, service for the board. There's comments back tonight that some families are not supposedly ready for informed to press.
Yes, and I actually, during the public comment, reached out to Mr. Lottina to ask how we can address that a little bit further.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruben.
Thank you. I also found this very informative, and I think it was very well done. It's important to know that the district has taken steps in the past year, reaching out to other school systems that we serve, and talking with them, trying to make sure that we can work as effectively as possible with that. But that being said, I had one question, which I was unaware of. So children who go to parochial schools or to other school systems, let me say, they, parents bring them to a drop-off point now?
No, no. That was one of the scenarios.
Well, how does that work now?
Currently, students are transported in. Both our private placements and private parochial schools are transported in on district vehicles.
On regular buses.
On regular buses or vans. And then they are hugged to Evans and Fishville Plain. The majority of the same schools do that. And then those vehicles, those nine, eighteen buses, so it would be nine basically for either side of the district, then transport those students out to their respective schools. So they ride in, they transfer onto the shuttle buses, and then the shuttle buses dispatch from there.
So conceivably now, some of those, some students at least, could be taking three bus rides during the day, right now?
Not an acceptable practice at all, but we don't have enough vehicles in order to be able to get them there directly.
All right, I'm just learning, thank you.
I was a bit surprised to see that we have a policy of no rides being more than forty-five minutes because my son was very young for kindergarten, so we sent him to Randolph School for a year. And he got out of Randolph at two twenty, and the bus took him to St. Mary's, where they didn't pick up the children until three o'clock. So he had over an hour ride home. It never seemed to bother him, but I...
Well, just to clarify, forty-five minutes for public education, reasonable time for special education, private placement, and private parochial?
I see. And so, is it, how long has this policy for forty-five minutes been for the public school children? And have we adjusted to make it more equitable with the private and parochial?
Hopefully, we have to the Board of Education to have that. It has been in place for years and years and years, so it's really up to Board.
All right, because I see, I would hate to see us having to make, to pick one of these scenarios solely on the basis of eight or ten runs that are fifty minutes instead of forty-five. That seems kind of...
And when I, and these are one-touch routing stops. So can some of these discrepancies be, you know, kind of smoothed over? Absolutely, but for the purposes of rerouting the entire district, it's timed. We did not, you know, we didn't take the time to make sure that we forget them as much as possible. So will some still be over based on the scenario that we presented? Yes, maybe not as many, but you still will be out of compliance with it. And again, I just want to clarify that reasonable amount of time for both special education and private and parochial students. We don't take reasonable to be twice as long as regular education students. We take reasonable to be within about an hour of break-in, give or take. Yeah, our private places are a little bit longer because they sometimes travel way beyond our district boundaries. But it is something that although it may seem like it's unfair, we are mindful of that and try to really be aware of that as we route.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Laura? All right, time's up, unless we want to extend discussion at this time. Does anyone wish to extend discussion at this time? No?
I have questions.
I, yes, be sure, any questions that you would like to submit, to send in to Mr. Carrion, and they will be, and that goes for the public also. You're welcome to submit any questions in writing to Mrs. Pedro, and they will be answered on the website, so everybody can see your question and answer, along with board questions, and anybody else who isn't here and is watching this at home. Thank you. We're doing, we're trying to improve communications, and that's, we're happy to answer your questions. All right, eight point, thank you very much, Mrs. Carrion. Eight point zero one, is establishment of the Tax Certiari Reserve Fund. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yes, you did.
Been a while since I had that.
There's a few ways you could pronounce that one.
Eight point zero one, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentures Central School District, Board of Education, authorizes the establishment of the Tax Certiari Reserve Fund to meet anticipated judgments or claims on proceedings instituted under Article VII of the Real Property Tax Law, which relate to the 2015-2016 tax roll hereafter the 2015-2016 Tax Certiari Reserve Fund. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education appropriates the sum of an amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars from the 2015-2016 school year general fund balance, which the Board of Education has been permitted to carry into the 2016-2017 school year, and deposit such monies into the 2015-2016 Tax Certiari Reserve Fund.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Soma, second, Mr. Lumia, discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Eight point zero two, establishment of repair reserve fund.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapentures Central School District hereby authorizes the establishment of a repair reserve fund pursuant to Section 6-D of the General Municipal Law for the purpose of funding repairs to capital improvements and equipment that do not recur annually or at shorter intervals. And be it further resolved that, subject to the approval from the voters of the Wapentures Central School District, the Board of Education appropriates the sum of an amount not to exceed one million six hundred fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars from the 2015-2016 school year general fund balance, which the Board of Education has been permitted to carry into the 2016-2017 school year, and deposit such monies into the regular repair reserve fund.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Carron, second, Mr. Lumia, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Are there any requests for additions to the agenda? In that case, it's time for communicate comments from the public. If anyone has an additional comment to make, or another one that you haven't had the chance to speak to before. Yes, on school-related issues, so they don't have to be related to the agenda tonight.
The button on top, underneath?
There you go.
I got it.
Hi, Mary, it's funny, I've got two children in the midst. And I just want to comment about start time and surveys and so on. Keep me a lot about the surveys that are done. While I personally don't really care what kind of start that's going to make a difference, I just want to say that if you're doing surveys, make sure that you're taking seriously. For example, you know, now that the Board wants to change the two-tier start time, but keep in mind, if you issue another survey, and let's say eighty and ninety percent of parents don't want to change the start time, is that something that's going to be truly considered by the Board? So keep in mind, if you're issuing surveys, you really have to use the results in an appropriate way and not just as trivial. So I just wanted to make that comment. Just make sure you do, you know, if you're doing surveys, make sure that you're really truly taking the feedback into consideration. Thank you.
Hello, Arlington, I'm Allison Conley. I wanted to thank Kristen. I love her health and wellness information. And I am that student that allows me to know who was ever. And it was like not a board policy, and I, even with our own building, our principals make the decision for us. There, just before he did, there was that back and forth on like the big sale and how can I have a coffee for a birthday, but then so we're on it for a trip. So I get it, but I think it would be like somehow awesome if we could be. We've been speaking of this equitable and consistency for a long time, if we could somehow get there with most of our things. I don't know school like this, I mean, I'm still being asked, but it's not what's happening in my world. There was, Kristen said with our gym or P.E., and I don't know, it just looked like she never, it got so specific. But I've known this for a long time, so I'll say it aloud. We don't need the legal mandates. We don't meet the legal mandate, which is one, three, five point four states of having one hundred and twenty minutes per hour. Because if you're on E numbers, and that means you have more I numbers, and that's a big, 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 like, no half-day, you're doing like, you have to go to the conference. Not meeting, meeting the legal mandate. With that, sometimes people like to throw in the word physical activity. That's not what the law says. But Mr. Slushauer said, which I left him here, but I'm always bringing up all the time, I was using recess, even if it's partial, ten minutes. He just took away what we could possibly, if we were going to use physical activities. I also don't know if I think making recess- The social time in the winter when they're watching a movie, not really paying a fan if they think that they're long days, they need it. But I don't know, like taking an overweight kid that wants to sit in a chair and having them do what you want it to do, like sit in a chair, is actually a punishment. My own child finds it, although she's a going student, but if I forget, it sounds a manner. She listens for ten minutes. She's happy, like, embarrassed. And sad she disappointed her teacher, but for real, she might have thought of it. So I don't really know if that's working too well. I just want to say any of that stuff. So I know it's, it's a lot, like I can give you the different, sure you all know them. Outtakes, they should have this much, and schools, we should have that much. I don't know what we're doing, like with bigger buildings that have like a gym, where we could even give them kind of something to do with this motor, to kind of burn off their calories and get that out of their system. I don't think I personally care if my school goes to two and a half hour earlier. I know gateheads early, this local parking lot, hopefully it'll be empty by the time that. I just don't know if two working families are going to say that that half hour is not really a big deal. I don't have the TV project. Fifteen minutes, five minutes, ten minutes, probably, the number you've seen. I'm getting up at the time, walking. Would be amazing. I really try not walking in the dark. But the one thing that we, you know, we weigh the pros and cons of how many, I know five years. Four pros and six cons. But families have made their lives around what they think those schedules are. And if you're leaving five minutes after high school or gets on a bus because you know their state, and now you have to go in and hope for that because it'll take with you going to work twenty minutes later, that might be where it's not, it seems, you know, it seems like it's a great that they're going to start early. But if your kid is getting on a high school bus and then you pull out of the driveway, that's not so great if you're two working families. Same with them coming home early, that could, that's, oh. The other thing you were talking about intramurals or the high schoolers, intramurals do exist, finally again, in the elementary schools. Again, it's not the end of my world. But they start at seven fifty-five. They would start at seven twenty-five, elementary schools. I think that's kind of early, but I'm out of time, so I'll just-
Sorry, good evening again. It's look hour, Conde's Fishkill. Real quick, just in review of the Fishkill Plains Elementary School, total enrollment for the school. Currently, there are roughly one hundred fifth grade students. When they move to sixth grade next year, we're going to have to add, I believe, a fourth, sixth grade class, because we're not going to have thirty-three students in each class. I was just wondering if we could start taking a look at next year with enrollment, with class sizes that are moving up, whether or not we have enough classroom space and enough teachers, and whether there's going to have to be some changes made. I don't want to start having this discussion May, June, over the summer, through September. I think for the start of the new year, if the administration can start to look at this, I'd appreciate it. I'm sure this scenario might be going on in more than just Fishkill Plains. Last Tuesday night, the Wapinjus Congress of Teachers had a presentation by the ST Caucus at John Jay High School. This presentation was a focus on how Common Core was causing damage to our children as well as our teachers. The two speakers that evening were two teacher union presidents from other school districts in the state. What an eye-opening experience it was to listen to these two professionals. This anti-common core coalition of teachers is spearheading an effort to reclaim the education of our children and to protect the jobs of our teachers. I want to thank all the teachers from the district who attended. I hope you will take this information back to your schools and share these powerful statements you heard to all of your fellow teachers. I was also very disappointed that only one school board member attended this presentation. Where were the rest of you? A topic as important as this required your attendance. No excuses, if you ask me. One of the presenters shared at the meeting that he had a meeting with the New York State Commissioner as part of another committee he sits on. He told us that when he asked the commissioner, what does college and career already mean to you? The commissioner did not have an answer to this question, nor did any of her staff. A very frightening thought, if you ask me. So I once again ask the members of this board, and especially those trustees who will be meeting with the commissioner at BOSI's next month, what are you going to say to her about what our true feelings are, about what the teachers as well as the parents think about Common Core and the standards, and what the state is doing to our children and teachers? You represent the people and the employees of this district, and you must convey our opinions and not yours as to how we really feel about what is going on with this nightmare in this district. Overwhelmingly, this district does not support Common Core. For the record, that statement does not violate your oath of office. Other school boards have made this statement. Why won't all of you? Can you please, based on comments by trustee Rubin, post to the district website and our Facebook page that you are asking for questions from parents, from teachers, from the community, as what you might convey to the commissioner at your meeting? I think this is very important to get some feedback from the community, and I appreciate you making that comment, trustee Rubin. Thank you.
Are there any other, oops. Are there any other comments from the community?
With regards to the six scenarios for busing, I just want to let you know that we had the redistricting that we had done, even for good, bad, or ugly. The parents have just rearranged their schedules, gotten home to daycares, gotten into intramurals, got into their schedules. And now you're going to ask them to redo that whole thing all over again. That puts, I know that it was part of this presentation tonight, but now you're asking well over five hundred people to start rearranging what their schedules are again. And that's in one year. Also, where you list busing as adequate, I'd have to say it's not. But the junior high school, as I've stated, there's three, three seats. The back seat is a jump seat for one person, two people are on it. It is crowded, overcrowded. It's causing disruptions in, in the busing, it's causing busing delays. And it's only going to get worse with the, you know, with the weather coming, the parkers, with winter gear, with sports, with instruments. And I ask you, what are you going to do if there's an accident with flying objects? That's a real safety, legal issue. And you really need to take a look at junior high school busing. And I'm sure you need to take a look at high school busing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Yes.
Mr. Lumia, and seconded by Mr. Rubin. All in favor?